The intent of tonight's work session is to start an introduction of possible changes to the city's sign regulations. The department, and I believe the city attorney, were not expecting any actions tonight. This will be more of an introduction and an opportunity for you to identify areas of questions, concerns, things along those lines. So to answer your question, Madam Vice Chair, I think we can go ahead and get started. Madam Vice Chair, could you use your microphone, please?
Forgot about the microphone. So we'll get started on this meeting. Thank everyone that's here for coming. And I guess I will... Mr. Newberry, you want to call and roll?
Commissioner Humphrey, Commissioner Levitt, Commissioner Cohn, Commissioner Gragnani, Commissioner Beatty, Commissioner Depler, Commissioner Simpson, Chair Lee, Councilmember Werther, Mayor Boland.
Okay, Mr. Vunich, I will turn the meeting over to you then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, before the department begins its presentation on this particular subject matter, sign regulations, I do want to introduce the St. Louis County Police Department's newest neighborhood policing officer, Steve Degelder. And I believe he'll become a familiar face at the back of the room, providing us security and protection as we talk about difficult sign regulations over the course of the next few meetings.
Right.
So the department would like to extend its welcome to Officer Degelder. In preparation of tonight's meeting, Mr. Newberry and I prepared for you a number of items. Key among those items is the Excel spreadsheet that is on your monitors as well as being projected behind the dais. If you can read that, you are superhuman, I believe, or have corrective glasses better than my contacts. But fortunately, through the benefit of technology, we can increase that size, and Mr. Newberry has prepared a wonderful presentation to assist in tonight's discussion. First and foremost, the discussion tonight is just the first step in what I believe will be many. As you know, the changes are being prompted by outside forces from Wildwood. Those forces started for all intents and purposes in the mind of the Department of Planning in Gilbert, Arizona. And the United States Supreme Court kind of set the cart on its side with a ruling in favor of the plaintiff, not the city. Fortunately, as part of that action, there were some general parameters that were established in a concurring opinion, but I believe not a majority opinion, that I think a lot of communities and other courts, particularly appeal courts, are utilizing now to better define what the Supreme Court left as part of their decision-making process. So tonight, as I mentioned, we have this Excel spreadsheet. Along with that information, the department provided you several other items. The first is a set of minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission's June 17, 2019 meeting, where this subject was first introduced, so to speak. And at the conclusion of that introduction, the Planning and Zoning Commission members requested that a work session be scheduled, and that at that work session, we'd be able to kind of dig a little deeper into the details, the questions, and potentially solutions to create a neutral content sign ordinance for the city of Wildwood. So that's why the minutes are included as part of tonight's packet. Secondly, the department also provided you, in legal size, double-sided, the current sign regulations of the city of Wildwood. And I thought those were important as a point of reference, a place to always return to and see where we are today, so to speak, as of October 7, 2019, and where we may end up in the future, whether it's four weeks from now, eight weeks from now, or whatever The next item is the sign regulations of Gilbert, Arizona. Again, the plaintiff in the case, the loser in the case, and ultimately revised sign regulations per that case. And so the department used this as kind of a guide as well, given that they had been challenged, they had been heard by the United States Supreme Court, had lost on a decision, and then had to kind of pick up the pieces and come up with a set of regulations that collectively their legal team, their elected officials and others believe satisfied what the Supreme Court had said. Also, at your chairs tonight, our city attorney, John Young, provided what is a draft model ordinance for sign regulations that's been through several iterations by the International...
The International Municipal Lawyers Association.
Thank you, sir. And we just received this today. That's not a slight to Mr. Young. It just explains why you received it tonight and not as part of the overall packet. Mr. Newberry and I did have time to go through it briefly, particularly the first portion of it, and it provides an excellent background to the progression, so to speak, from Gilbert, Arizona, and then what the appeal court have interpreted since then in terms of what can be regulated, what's neutral content, et cetera. And so from that perspective, I would encourage you all to take some time and look at this as well. And then finally, as I started, we have the matrix. So those are the starting points for our discussion on the city's sign regulations. And key amongst that is again the remembering that sign regulations have to be content-neutral. And so that's a fairly substantial challenge from the perspective of the department. If you can't call a sign for its intended purpose, what do you do? How do you describe it, and where do you go from there? I think you'll see when you read the handout that City Attorney Young has provided, it appears many of the regulations are getting much, much more simplified and using a lot more basic terms versus some of the ones we've seen in the past. And that's the intent of the department's matrix tonight. As we discussed earlier, the department's intent is not to lessen the protections that our sign regulations provide to the Wildwood community and its residents, but more so to simplify it and use standard terms that in the end, City Attorney Young do not feel violate the Supreme Court's decision. So first, what the department did is it made two major assumptions, and this is where we should start the discussion. The first is, we do not necessarily call signs by their name any longer. We describe signs by how they are mounted. So there are two general types of signs, ground-mounted and wall-mounted. In the opinion of the department, it's hard to draw any content from that, so to speak, meaning it's just how they're placed, whether it's on a residential, commercial, industrial, or other property, on the ground or on a wall or structure, so to speak. The next assumption, again, a fairly major assumption on the part of the department, is that to identify them by zoning classification. Again, there's residential and several components associated with residential. There's commercial, and then there's industrial. And then I also, just to complete the table, added the PRD, the CUP, and the MXD. We do have one of them in Town Center. So to start, we would describe signs how they're mounted, not as business, not as monument, not as this, not as that. And then we would distinguish them by zoning category. So we have a ground-mounted sign in the non-urban district. To the department's interpretation, that's a factual representation of the sign and location. Does not say anything about what might be on the sign, the purpose of the sign, but more so its mounting and zoning. Thereafter, the department believed it would be appropriate to create an exemptions list. I'm going to jump to that next. And I start here because the discussion of ground-mounted and wall-mounted signs will take more time. But in this particular case, the exemptions to any review, so to speak, of sign regulations would be government signs that are placed in public rights-of-way areas, gravestones, price signs for gas, real estate signs, and then finally, flags. As you'll see on several of those, there are qualifiers associated with them, but again, not from the perspective of what they can or cannot say, or the message they convey, but more importantly, just proportionality or size limitation. Also referenced, as you can see, the city has a design criteria handbook for public signage in the rights-of-way areas. There's also ASHTO specifications, and then there's the Unified Traffic Code, all of which prescribe specific heights, sizes, colors, reflective materials, et cetera. So again, the signs, government signs in the public rights-of-way would be governed by that. The next category... Go back, pardon me. What the department describes as prohibited sign. And the department took this step based upon Gilbert, Arizona's ordinance. That community has a list of prohibited signs. Assuming that they know what they can or cannot do better than most, it seemed reasonable to start here. This is not the ending. Certainly, there may be questions and concerns. I've already heard of one tonight. But for example, our current sign regulations prohibit many of the same descriptions you see before you tonight: animated signs, balloon signs, blinking signs, flashing signs, inflatable signs, intermittent lighting signs, moving signs, reflective, rotating, noise emanators, painted types on trees, rocks, and other natural features, private signs in public rights-of-way area, fences, fence signs, bandit signs, vehicle signs, signs in the sight distance, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a long list, but of those, almost all except advertising signs are currently not allowed by the city of Wildwood. Advertising signs are accommodated in our current sign regulations, and there may be federal and state protections that require us to carry that over. But for the starting point of tonight's discussion, the department wanted to at least put that particular type of sign in the prohibited list, and let's justify taking it out because we either have to under federal requirements or state law. The question I received tonight was relative to moving signs, and in some instances, that could be interpreted as an individual standing on the sidewalk with a placard in the hand, moving it around to draw attention. And certainly, that's the crux of one of our issues relative to our current sign regulations. I believe if you look at our current regulations... Try to reference this for you quickly as I can. Appears the copier didn't do what I thought it was doing. So on... There's no page number, unfortunately, but on the back of the second page, Item 4, it reads currently, "Portable reader boards, parenthetical, changeable copy sign, banners, inflatable aids such as cold air balloons, searchlights, flashers, emanators, and mechanical movement or contrivances any of kind used as an advertising device are prohibited." I think it's important to note that in this instance, I reference with our current sign regulations, that is for all C, commercial, and M, industrial districts. And I think current appeal court determinations or opinions seem to believe that commercial signs do not rise to the same level of protection as residential or signs in residential areas that can be used for political purposes, political causes, et cetera. So there appears to be some greater latitude. So if you're keeping a list of things we need to return to, I want to assure you that moving or living signs, which kind of brought the issue to the forefront here in the city of Wildwood regarding our current regulations, should be added to it, and we need to discuss that at greater length. I'm going to go one more and then kind of work my way back. And these are several sign types that the department was unable to kind of fit into either ground or wall-mounted types based upon zoning district. And they are kiosk signs. We created this legislation when Dearburgs Town Center was being proposed to accommodate kiosk signs for the bank use that's in association with Dearburgs and their drive-through pharmacy. And so around the top of the kiosk, there is signage associated with those structures. Menu boards in association with drive-through facilities, and then our favorite and a friend we've talked about a lot in the past years, temporary all types. As you know, temporary signs are probably, from the perspective of the department, the one we hear the most about because they're placed somewhere in the right-of-way or somewhere where they should not be, and they create concerns about detracting from the natural beauty of the city and creating distractions and et cetera. So those are part of that list to kind of look at and discuss in the future. So we've talked about basically three types: exemptions, prohibited, and those for future discussion. Now we'll return to the first of the matrix. So the department began with ground-mounted types and looked specifically at the PS, Park and Scenic District, and then all the residential districts. Many of the items in the table, height, width, size, are consistent with what our current code has in place at this time. There are some limitations associated with our current codes that would be an expectation to carry over. So in terms of ground-mounted, the height, the maximum height, is 10 feet, the maximum width, 10 feet. The size can vary depending on the district, from 10 square feet to 16 square feet, and then on up from 10 square feet to 30 square feet. In the residential districts, as it currently is described in our sign regulations, lighting can be from all sources, that means internal, external, and backlit. Again, unless in Town Center area, then as our architectural guidelines require, all lighting must be by external sources unless otherwise allowed by the site-specific PRD ordinance. Number of signs, this is consistent, one per frontage. If you have one frontage, you have authorization for one sign. If you have two frontages, you have authorization for two signs. There are provisions in the commercial district to allow for a third sign, and I'll describe that when we get to that point here in a little bit. Location, all frontages of lots, but not within the defined front yard setback areas. And again, that's how it currently reads in our sign regulation. And then mounting characteristics, there's a good definition in our sign regulations. It may need to be updated, but for the most part, it talks about the outline area of a monument sign shall include the area within a continuous perimeter of a plane, et cetera, et cetera. So for preparation purposes and ease of creating the table, I didn't replicate the exact description here, but referenced the particular section in the chapter. So the key components for a sign that would be ground-mounted in any of the districts identified as Park and Scenic through non-urban resident districts and all the R districts would have, in principle, if supported, these general characteristics. I'm going to take a break here and see if you have any questions, and I would encourage, Mr. Young, if I'm going astray, this is a good time to stop me, and let's talk about it.
Commissioner Gragnani?
Yes, Mr. Vunich. You may have said it, and I may have, it may not have registered in my head, but what would be a vehicle sign? What would constitute a vehicle sign?
With technology today, you can have your whole vehicle skinned, so to speak, with an advertisement. And it would be then advertising some type of product, some type of business, or some type of activity.
Okay.
But again, we're just saying it's a sign that's mounted on a vehicle. We're not saying what content. So the question becomes again, let's say that sign has, you know, "Vote for John Smith." Is that a prohibited sign? At the end of the day, I believe not, because if you read the information provided by City Attorney Young from the Lawyers Association, at the top of that hierarchy, the pinnacle of the pyramid is political...
See.
Political signs, political cause signs are the most protected of any.
So what about, I mean, all the cars that you see driving around or people that have work vehicles that have the name of their company on them and they're parked in their driveway?
Well, that's prohibited now, and we would continue to prohibit it as part of any update if we were to follow the matrix as presented to you tonight. The principle is, is that you cannot have a vehicle that has commercial markings in a residential setting. It does not mean you can not have it on your property, but it cannot be visible. And so what we encourage people to do is to place the commercial vehicle in their garage so it's not visible from the street. Then anyone driving on the street would not know that there is either a commercial vehicle or a commercial business operating in a residential area. Hide it, can't see it, you're not violating the code.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, I guess that's one of those things where if the neighbors complain, it would be enforced, but other than that, it would not. Because, I mean, you get into situations now where especially people that, you know, work for a electrical, you know, as an electrician or a, you know, HVAC company, and they're driving vans in many homes. I mean, I know both of our kids, their garages are small enough that they barely get to, you know, a little SUV and a midsize SUV in their garage, and to try to park a full-size van in their garage would not fit.
I mean, my next neighbor, he's got a... He works as a veteran. He's got his truck parked in the house. It's got its dynamo rack.
Well, first and foremost, we are primarily driven on the basis of complaints. It's very seldom that the code enforcement officers will go out and look for particular violations. Obviously, if it's blatant and they see it, they're obliged to try to address it, but we're complaint-based. And I understand the context you're describing. Councilmember Werther has a situation in the Nantucket subdivision that I'm working on right now, exactly as you described. The individual works for a company. The truck is skinned on three sides. It parked, it was parked in the driveway, and the neighbors complained. In the context of one individual, sure, why can't we be reasonable? But in the context of if there's 10 of them on a cul-de-sac, nine times out of 10, people aren't going to like that.
Right.
It detracts from a lot of what we tried to do in terms of the character of our area. It takes away, in my opinion, from the landscaping, the architecture, and certainly from some perspective. It's a mingling of what I would describe as kind of conflicting uses.
And I'm not advocating for people to be able to do this by any, by any means, but I just, I wanted to be clear that, have it clear in my mind that commercial vehicles that are, that do have a company's logo or whatever, whether it be skinned or just painted on or whatever, are technically what you're getting at with this vehicle sign. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Werther?
Thanks. Mr. Vunich brought up the point I was going to get to with regards to enforcement in the subdivisions. You also have homeowners associations involved in this as well, in terms of their, their actions or lack thereof. actions or lack thereof, depending on where you view it. The difficulty is, is ultimately, and I'd like to probably leave it where it's at, it's a, it's a rule in the city that such signs, signage is not allowed, and vehicles as such more so, I think they're defined as commercial vehicles. That's where it comes into play. It's both code enforcement as well as a police matter, depending on the time of day that it occurs. So that's the long and short of it. Mr. Boonich, I had some other questions here, and maybe I can get to them in terms of trying to make sure I frame my understanding of where we need to go with the signage regulation. And I know it's been several months since we've talked about this, but I'm, if I've asked this question before, just simply say, slap me around a little bit and say, oh, here, here's how we're going to do it. For our purposes here, are we going to be in a position where we need to define allowable sign types, as well as the characteristics of those sign types for each of our zoning districts to be compliant? That way, we're not, we're content neutral, right? But we're having to then define what sign types we'd like to see in the various districts. And I get to it from a standpoint of, you look down Main Street, you've got two buildings with a very unique signage on them. One, you've got the sign for Benedettos, which is that corner-mounted sign, not animated or anything like that. I imagine if somebody wanted to play with the lighting and circuitry, they probably could do that. Then immediately across the street, coming back this way, you have a very different, more art deco, traditional-type signage in terms of the B&amp;B theaters. Well, neither of them have any sort of, and I'll use the term articulation to them, meaning lights aren't necessarily flashing, and they don't migrate or cycle through, there's no animation to them, there's no motion to the signs. Many of the signs, I thought that we kind of sought for our town center, fell back more to that old-school type of signage, where there may be some articulation, or there may be some motion to a sign, you know, whether it's, you know, Cowboy Bob kind of waving at people as they're driving by, whatever the case may be, or Shoney's Big Boy for others to, to understand as a reference point. So maybe we need to, I don't know if we need to look at those, or if we need to simply say, look, if we're going to stay with the prohibited list in those areas, then we exclude all those, and I, we have to be creative then when new tenants come into the town center area, and we say, hey, you know, feel free to be somewhat unique in terms of your signage, but don't do this, this, and this, sort of thing. I'm just trying to understand where we're headed with that, and if that's what the department's thinking about, or if that's what other commission members are thinking about, but it seems to be where I've got my head wrapped around it. Because when I started looking at this over the weekend, I looked at the prohibited types, some of these sign types I had to look up. I didn't realize bandit signs are basically, you know, yard signs. Yeah, I didn't realize they called them bandit signs. So I was like, bandit signs, okay, so thieves are here. That's sort of, but, you know, it is what it is, and so we're learning things as we go. And if that's the case, bandit signs are prevalent all over the city, illegally placed in that regard.
So to answer your question as simply as possible, and one that was raised by Mr. Newberry to I, particularly relating to projection signs, how are the projection signs mounted? They're on a wall. So they're allowed. Again, we're being content neutral, we're looking at, is it ground-mounted, or is it on a wall? And in the instance of Benedettos in Table 3, they're on a wall, and so they would fall into that particular category in the appropriate commercial district. The tougher part comes in when you want to do something that's more classical, or more innovative, or imaginative. Most sign regulations aren't set up for that. They're a basic set of requirements. So there's two approaches. First, if legal and accepted by City Council, you, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommend that the Architectural Review Board have allowance to accommodate, let's say, the more unusual signs as part of a review process administered by that five-member board, and ultimately acted upon. The fallback, if that isn't the appropriate approach, would be the Board of Adjustment, which, as you know, has the authority to pretty much waive anything and all things that are part of the zoning ordinance based upon physical characteristics of the site that create practical difficulty or a unique hardship.
Okay, so basically, you're saying we can keep this list of prohibited signs the way it is and deal with them in one-off situations?
Well, and again, within the commercial districts, and I'll defer to Mr. Young, I think we have a little more elasticity in terms of how we can address the signs based upon what I've read, particularly the information that was provided to us today, that commercial signs aren't at the tip of the pinnacle of that pyramid, they kind of slip down some, and there's a little more latitude in how we address it. The waiver process, I understand. And you don't want to discourage uniqueness, and that's the fault of many regulations. They put everybody into a single track, regardless of it's good or bad.
Well, yeah, and a perfect point is, are the buildings that are nearby to Benedettos, whether it's the Walgreens, the building with the Starbucks, and Wine and Honey places, you know, even around to the old former City Hall, those locations are all basic standard kind of, and it's, to me, it's contrary to what we wanted to try and encourage within the town center in terms of not only building type, but uniqueness in terms of identification.
That's a, I think John Gunther, who was on our Architectural Review Board for many, many years, used to say that buildings are constructed at a 360-degree approach, meaning that, yeah, there's backsides to building, but they all don't, not all sides have to look like it, and you should view it from that perspective and try your best on all sides.
Joe, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Under number one, business signs, four, where it's the portable readers, is there a reason we have the word mechanical in that sentence, other than just say animators or movement?
I believe it's in there because the original sign regulations that the city carried over from St. Louis County were done in 1982. So it's probably a term that was prob, was more likely to be used back then than now. So if we wanted to strike that, that'd be straightforward.
I think we should eliminate that, because movement is more descriptive, I think, for a catch-all than...
I do apologize about how the copy came out. Yep, got it. Again, this is one of those areas where I think Mr. Newberry and I have no pride of authorship. We're just trying to understand a difficult playing field. And so again, I offer to you, if you feel this is, we're really off-track, or if we're completely illegal, say it, we'll step back, and we'll try another direction.
Councilman Werther.
Thanks. And I know I went on a bit of a rant there. Getting back, getting back to my first question, my first question that was kind of embedded upfront, are we going in the direction with each zoning district crafting a list of allowable signs and their types and sizes?
From a practitioner's standpoint, not probably a very good one, trying to define all allowable signs may be a task that we don't want to, we don't want to necessarily step into, unless there's so few of them that we would allow, that it's a manageable number. And my fear is, as with any regulation at times, that we miss something that was obvious to everybody outside this building, but not to us.
So basically, we'll go the direction of listing what's not allowed in each zoning district, and let them figure out what's allowed based on what we say is excluded.
And I think the beauty of Gilbert, Arizona's prohibition list is their general terms.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they just talk about what the sign does, not necessarily what it says. Now, again, they may be on thin ice, and Mr. Young will tell me, but again, I felt comfortable starting there because, again, our sign regulations have many of the same descriptions.
Yeah, and if we're strictly sticking to types of signs, the mounting, the size, and we're not speaking to content, it's hard, hard to really go against that.
Commissioner Cohen.
This might be in the area of when a sign is not a sign. In my travels, I've noticed a lot of buildings where they would like light up the building with different colored lights. Sometimes the lights would move. In one instance, they were showing a Charlie Chaplin movie on the side of the building. Does that fall into any sign category, trying to light your building up?
If I were asked that by a development entity that was proposing something similar in Wildwood, I would say it's not a sign.
Joe, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This Excel spreadsheet that you're starting, is this intended to be published, or is it just a working document?
Working document at this stage, but it was posted on the city's website, so it is available to anyone that might be interested.
Well, I was going to say, going back to Mayor Werther, or Councilman Werther's comment, if we're going to have prohibited signs of all types and put it in a spreadsheet, we shouldn't leave it blank. We should fill in the boxes, if that's the intent, to publish this as part of the sign documentation.
I appreciate it, sir, and that's a good suggestion.
Commissioner Grigani.
Yes, Mr. Boonich, excuse me, to speak to what Councilman Werther was talking about, I, I would agree, I don't think we should have a list of what's allowable, because if you're trying to get people to get more imaginative with their signs, I don't think you want to tell them, you know, this is allowed. I mean, if you just say, these are the things that you cannot do, and then whatever you can come up with out of your, you know, imagination about what you would like to do with your sign, then we address it at that point, as long as it doesn't get into one of the things that's not allowed. I think that would stifle the creativity rather than, than try to enhance it.
There's a lot of factors that I believe kind of tamp down creativity. Obviously, we've talked about regulations that kind of track you in a single direction. I think one big factor for most businesses is the cost of the sign. The more elaborate, the more imaginative, the more expensive the sign. And when you look at statistics, that many businesses don't survive the first year, or even have a higher percentage of going out of business in the first five years, I can see why a lot of business owners are hesitant to dive in headfirst on an expensive sign when there's a potential that in a year or so, the business may not be viable, and it's just another cost that is added in. So, but yes, there's a lot of incentives, and what I guess, when I, what I think the department, Mr. Newberry and I are trying to do is to say, simplify it. Somebody were to come in, this is probably in the category, and it's not on this spreadsheet, too much information, but let's say I get a sign application, I look at five things. I look at the size, the height, the width, the number, and the lighting. And those are the five things I look at. I never look at content. Obviously, I hope it's the business that's going into the space, or the institution that owns the property, but factually, I think if we focus on the key characteristics of the sign itself, and ensuring it's placed at the appropriate location relative to setbacks and site-distance triangles, so that it's not an obstruction, or it does not create a distraction for public safety purposes, I'd like to think that there's a greater likelihood of us being successful in the application than being challenged in the court of law. So that's the ground-mounted signs in the Park and Scenic District, the non-urban resident district, and all of the R districts. So continuing with ground-mounted signs, it's a little simpler in this regard, there's not as many districts, zoning districts, but there is the C1, C2, and there's the planned commercial district, our C8 district, the M1 industrial, and then the M3, planned industrial district. Our current sign regulations are very specific regarding the C1 neighborhood shopping district. And the title of the zoning district should give you some clues or cues why the restrictions on signs is so substantial. It's intended to be those types of commercial activities that can be placed in a residential setting and have minimal or no impact on the surrounding home site. And so ground-mounted signs are prohibited. It's not to say that a business in a C1 neighborhood shopping district can't have signage, but they're wall-mounted, not ground-mounted. And so that's the big distinction. And so again, in keeping with the desire of the department, we're talking about simplifying. The chart makes it easy. I'm in a C1 neighborhood shopping district, which, for all intents and purposes, is Clayton and Strucker Road, the intersection. There are, in principle, no freestanding signs. Now, that changed with the C8 district, and some harsh trading that was done when all of the properties were downzoned back in 1997 by the city of Wildwood. And just as a brief sidebar, at one time where Elegant Child was located, there was intended to be a convenience store with gas pumps, a car wash, et cetera. So in 1997, nine properties in that vicinity were downzoned, and to avoid potential litigation, the city worked with the owners of those nine properties and came up with a balance: lesser intensity uses, but some accommodations that aren't normally allowed in terms of signage, and et cetera. But as a rule, C1, no ground-mounted sign. C2 and C8, again, very reminiscent of our current requirements, in that C2 and C8, the height is 10 feet, the width is 10 feet. Current sign regulations limit the size of a ground-mounted sign in the C2 district as 30 square feet, and up to 50 square feet in the C8 district. There is a reference in the general language that 75 square feet can be authorized, and again, the department made a determination that it would only present up to 50 square feet for the purposes of tonight's discussion. Lighting, all sources, again, unless in the town center area, or otherwise allowed by a site-specific ordinance, such as the C8 district, M3 district, et cetera. Number, one per frontage, again. Number, one per frontage, again. Location, at the frontages of the lot, but again, not within the defined front yard setback areas. And then finally, mounting characteristics, again, just deferring to the general definition. I think it's important to note, at least in terms of location, in these instances, we're not dealing with 50-foot front yard setbacks, 20, 25, 35-foot distances. In town center, we're dealing with zero-foot, five-foot, or 10-foot build-to line. So the proximity of a ground-mounted sign in town center can be quite close to the edge of the sidewalk, parking aisle, or driveline. So if there are concerns that, as we did with ground-mounted signs in residential zoning districts, kind of pushes them away from the edge of roadway a certain distance, in the C districts, we're allowing them to be on very close proximity. And I think I'm running out of time. So again, ground-mounted, C, M districts, and I'll be the first to admit, with the MXD, the PRD, and the CUP, I need to do a little bit more work and consult with Mr. Young and Mr. Newberry before I feel comfortable kind of filling in all of them. But just as a concluding remark, the C8, the M3, the MXD, the PRD, and the CUP to a certain degree are ordinances or permits written specific to the property based upon a plan. And in many instances, accommodations can be made that are not necessarily allowed under just the underlying requirements of the designation, and we do that occasionally, as you know. Not all lots are created equally, not all streets provide same visibility, not all situations are the same. And the beauty of the planned districts and the overlay district is that it gives us that flexibility to kind of tune a lot of what we do to make the best development possible. We have a lot more to go, but as I mentioned at the start of the presentation tonight, the intent here is to kind of start the process, and then from that point, we'll kind of dive into the wall-mounted types, and then we'll start giving you more and more information as we work toward a conclusion in terms of a recommendation, hopefully sometime before the end of 2019. Mr. Chair, I'm going to close because I think we might be right at the 7 o'clock hour, but if there's any final thought for Mr. Young, Mr. Newberry, or I, I think we all would be glad to hear them.
Councilman Werther?
Mr. Boonich, I was just going to ask, you mentioned about future meetings. What is that cadence? Do we expect to have a work session in a couple weeks' time to pick up where the wall-mounted and continue on, try and work through all this? Because there's a lot to chew on here, obviously.
I think I would defer to the commission members. I think there's a balance here. I don't necessarily want to try to create responses and new information and do it half-heartedly because we're on a too short of timeframe, but my fear is, is if we go to too long of a timeframe, we'll spend most of our time refreshing instead of that. So with the permission of the commission members, I would like to have another work session in two weeks so we could go through the rest of the matrix. And then I'm going to probably ask Mr. Young to kind of weigh in on some of the legalities of the holes in this Swiss cheese that I've created for you to consume. Mr. Chair? Thank you.
I'll go ahead and we'll stop the meeting. I'm going to do a five-minute break for everybody who may need five minutes.